Yep.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. We'll start the meeting with questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thanks for coming. We'll start with the approval of the agenda and the additions, additions, or corrections. Nancy, anything?
No.
Yeah?
Nope.
Nope.
No.
Hearing none. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Thanks to Wayne, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Things stand, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Consent agenda. Everything's on there, using the packet. Any questions for Nancy?
No.
Entertainer motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Mel, do you have a second?
One second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimously. Don't have any visitors tonight. Mayor's report. We got the 2020 budget levy discussions. Let me just skip that for just one second. If I could have asked, Mel and I attended the notification meeting last night. So she just gives a little update on that, quick to get that on the record and kind of bring it to speed.
It was a, it was a good meeting. It was a long meeting. The State Department of Corrections sent an individual who presented a lot of information about how one qualifies to be a level three offender and what we as a community should expect. And I think the biggest takeaway that I've heard from a lot of people today was that the thing that everybody needs to do is be, be aware of where your kids are and who they're associating with and have the important discussions with them about being aware of their surroundings and, and people that are trying to befriend them that they might not know. And the, the general takeaway was that this individual will have to check in with the police on a regular basis and everyone just should stay vigilant.
And then on that note too, the school did a really good job of, I think it was yesterday, I think they had three lockdowns. They were teaching the kids a lot of.
We also had a meeting before school. They, they met with each individual, school building, and kind of briefed the teachers on how to keep the kids safe and what to do as well. So Mr. Matuzka did a very good job of getting everybody the, the information that they needed.
Good, thank you very much. And then before we get to the budget, because that's a joyful topic tonight before Thanksgiving, I just want to take the chance, opportunity to say thank you to everybody who makes this work. We can't do it without our consultants, engineer, attorney. We can't do it without you guys. So thank you guys for all you do for the city throughout the year and then going forward. City staff, I think you guys know it. Without you guys, nothing is done here either. So I appreciate what you guys do, not only at the meetings, but throughout the workdays and work weeks and work years. So if you want to just pass that on to the different units and department heads, that we appreciate everything that everybody does to make the city of Cassin work. Despite, you know, some of the feedback we get now and then, you know, we do have a pretty good city. Things are, are done quite well here. You know, a good example, I think we've learned from some of our shortcomings or mistakes as well. I think, you know, communication about the storm that was potentially coming last night started coming out Monday or so. The city was sharing stuff, police department was sharing things, we shared it on our social media. I had several people, you know, thanking us because they noticed that, oh, you know, a difference than before. And Public Works, you know, gave me a little heads up and I shared that about, you know, getting cars off the street and they were ready to go. So I think everybody's, you know, we're aware and we're alert and we know what's going on and we're going to do what we can do, you know, within our abilities. And then thanks to the council. It's a thankless job, for sure. I don't think people understand quite how much time and energy and effort and sleepless nights that you put in to do what we do. And just to thank everybody that's up here that's, that's ever served and that's serving now, I think the community is better off because you're doing that. So thank you very much. And on to the budget. So, we set the Plimray budget back in September at 3.72 percent. We've had some time to think about it. We're going to have a closed session regarding personnel later on, some labor negotiation issues and possible tentative agreements. So I believe that the numbers that we had estimated in September as far as our insurance costs and labor costs are going to be pretty close to what we had there overall. So that number I don't believe is going to be a big impact to what we have. So now we're looking at, in the packet.
Does that insurance number reflect the increased 6%?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Yep. So if you look at, Nancy had a handout, I believe Nancy, you put that in here, right? So that shows where we're at with the budget and if we want to get to a certain percentage, it shows what we would have to eliminate to get there. Dollar amount. The big things here are. So if you look at, in the. Personnel there. So the personnel is the, the big dollar card. And so that, that's what we have to decide. Do we want to add any personnel at all? Portion. Do we want to keep the levy at 13%? If we keep it at 13%, does that mean adding personnel or are we fixing things? So just my general observation from talking to people is that no, no one wants their taxes to go up, first off, right? There's no warm and fuzzy conversation to say, hey, how about if we raise your taxes, whatever percent, it doesn't matter what percentage it is. It could be 1%. Heck, two years ago when it was 0%, we still had, why didn't you cut it down? So there's, there's no happy place to be with raising taxes. But we do have a significant market value increase in our area, which people got that notice too. So some folks were negatively affected by that because their valuations haven't been adjusted in a few years. Some others have. So portions of people had, are seeing, realizing a bigger increase than, than others. That's a function of how the county does the valuation. That's out of our control. But overall, the city of Cassin, our valuation is higher and at the 13%, our, our rate is still less than what it was the year before as a percentage of our tax capacity. So if it's 77% the year before, 13% represents 75%. So still lower as far as our percentage of capacity. So, and the conversation I've had with the people, I don't think people are going to mind as much about the increase if we're fixing our infrastructure. And that's not to say that additional personnel isn't always needed. I think right now the taxpayers, especially after the last six months that we've had, can understand that if we're going to fix our infrastructure, whatever it might be. Now, there's not a lot we can do in this percentage because it's only the percentage of the levy to go fix trunk lines or sewer lines. That's not the thing. But overall, looking at all of our infrastructure in the city, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed. So that's just my general, from talking to people. So if anybody else has anything there, so I, I don't know what direction we want to go. If we have a bogey as far as the number we want to get down to, we've got all kinds of options.
Well, if we want to fix stuff, we got to put people in the street in storm area because we're understaffed there now. We didn't, things didn't get done in this year again because, I mean, it was an odd year, but we still couldn't get things done because we're pulling people from other departments. So we gotta, I don't, I think you gotta leave that one in there. Increase that up to a full-time leave to help them out.
And piggybacking on that statement as well, I mean, in reading Officer Plimes' resignation, because he's going where he can get a full-time position as an officer, and I, I quite like him, I know him as a former student, but I think it's kind of a shame that we lost an officer because we don't have an open position for a full-time officer. And as our community continues to grow and we have folks moving into the area, it's not a bad thing to also consider that we need, as, as our chief has said, a full-time position.
I'll, I'll piggyback on that. You know, I, I can see cutting the one new officer. But I really think we need to stick with it, giving him at least one more. I mean, when I was 18, I could walk down Hennepin Avenue at 2:00 in the morning with no fear. I wouldn't walk down a street in southeast Rochester at 2:00 in the morning for all the money you can pay me. And that's just 16 miles away. And the crooks, they, they watch what's going on. And if we start being lax with law enforcement, and I know nobody likes to hire anybody, nobody likes to put an increase to hire somebody. But if you want to keep this town as safe for your kids, grandkids, yourself, that we have right now, at least keep it status quo. And they're having trouble finding people working part-time just because of the state regulations. If we can give them one officer and if we can move this part-time street person to full-time, I would be happy with that. But also, we need to keep working on the streets and the infrastructure. We, we gotta keep going. We've been going backwards for so long, someday it's going to bite us bad. I mean, I can give you figures what it will cost down the road five years from now and it's astronomical. We, we gotta keep it up. That's just my view.
Dan, anything else?
No, we just, I think we need to, need to grow our staff with our growing city. If we want to get stuff done and keep it the way it is. I mean, with adding, we're not adding enough to grow the city, but at least we're growing and, I mean, as much as I don't want my taxes to go up either, I still want the city to be the city everybody wants to live in.
The only, my biggest hang-up on the police department, yeah, I support the police department, those guys are awesome. They do a great job for us. And it's, it's a numbers thing to me, is, is the dollars that we spend compared to a neighboring community, which I understand does not have their own police department in Byron, they contract with Homestead County. So it's different. You're not comparing apples to apples. I completely understand that. But when we compare the apple to the orange, the orange is spending $400,000 for police protection and we're spending $1.4 million on police protection. So I just am trying to figure out the million dollars extra that it, that we're getting comparatively. And I just, I've struggled with that for three years. I've asked questions. I still don't understand all the answers. So maybe it's partly on me. But I just, I struggle. We have a $3 million levy and $1.4 million of it is one department, which again is an essential department. I get that. But how can you contract for the same service or near the same service? Or even if it's half the service, but it's a million dollars more, not 400,000 more. So that, that's the part that just still baffles me and I don't understand it.
Talk to West Concrete, talk to Kenyon, they went county, they're back to their own police force.
I'm not asking to go county.
It doesn't, it doesn't work.
No, I understand. I'm not asking to go county. I'm just, what, if I can spend $400,000 for a service and get X, or I can spend $1.4 million for a service and get X plus what? Do I get X plus a million dollars in service? I mean, because my understanding is the contract in Byron, they have two people from Homestead County that are patrolling there on a regular basis as part of their contract. We have two people patrolling here, but it costs us a million dollars more.
I don't think those two people are in town all the time.
That's what I need to understand. I just, when I look at the overall impact to our budget, that's, again, nothing against our, our police force, the men and women who are serving there. I just need it as far as dollars and cents go. How are we spending a million dollars more? Are we getting a million dollars more worth of coverage? I understand with the contracts, you know, maybe Homestead County is big enough with Rochester there, they're undercharging them too. Because, you know, when I talk, I've talked to the sheriff about this in Dodge County. We're not really interested to do that. They're, they're definitely not interested in doing it on their end. He said, your contract's going to be about the same. Because they'd have to buy all the additional vehicles and all your stuff for Homestead County. It's maybe bigger, they can absorb that. But that's the part I struggle with is, and I know the police schedules aren't really public knowledge because they don't need to be public knowledge because they don't want it public, but where are we short? When don't, you know, where, where are we short? That's, that's just a question I have for, to think about is. Where are we short? Or are we not getting done?
You are. I'm just waiting my turn.
Yep, you got it.
At the end of the day, we have to face, you know, we have to go at this and be able to complete it with the straight face test. That we can sell this to our constituents with a straight face that we've done everything that we could, providing the level of service necessary at the cost that it's going to take to do that. Having the joy of going through the negotiations on Monday, I've got a lot of things on my mind that I'll share during the, the closed session that evolves around personnel and may have some impact on what we do and making decisions on personnel. I don't see that we can for sure do two police force. I'm still open to one. But, and the part-time, I'm still open to that. I haven't closed the door on that one either. But I, there are some things that are going to be discussed later that is going to impact all of this. I, I don't know where we're going. I, I'm concerned that we're not going to get that 8% to 9% target that we were talking about. Hearing that we're still going to be under the tax capacity from previous years, even if we keep it at that 13%, that's good to hear, but we still have the infrastructure needs. And I have, we even considered, or do we need to consider borrowing money? And then having that future budgets that we're in though, so we can get where we need to be current with things, infrastructure and everything right now, and then continue to work from this point on to try to maintain that level of service that we're providing with infrastructure and keeping things adequately maintained. Always the goal is to try to keep tax rates and tax levies as low as we possibly can. And we've done that multiple times over multiple years, over the, you know, past probably two or three decades. However, each time we've done that, we've fallen further and further behind, as it, as it appears to me now. So I'll just reserve, you know, making any final decisions until we have the opportunity to talk about personnel in the closed session. But I'm open to at least one police officer and I'm open to increasing the park for now.
Okay. And just to clarify, so you said something about the borrowing for some of these big infrastructure needs. But that can be a discussion now, obviously for this year, but also I think next year is probably going to be the bigger discussion because when we get back all the, those seven points that you guys are studying for us, right, to give us back the information. And we're going to have a plan next spring, summer, fall of, here's some fixes that we, is that, am I correct on that? That we'll have more clarity on, we need to have, spend X amount to fix these six things or two of them.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. So we're, we're doing that kind of work to kind of size up what we think we need to make for investments in the public infrastructure with respect to the sanitary sewer and some of the backing up and the homes and flooding that we've added. I think that's number one. Number two, three, four, five years ago, we did a kind of a capital approval plan. What was our major projects we wanted to do with the water main and County 21, the dump road, Trunk Highway 57, 16th Street going east, 16th Street going west, Third, Fourth and Fifth, kind of done all of those. Something that we really have left out there is the water tower that we may talk about here on the engineering report in the second phase of waste water treatment plan. So we've kind of knocked all those off. Maybe that's a time when we have the sewer stuff do more of a capital improvement plan and a big picture thinking on where we're going, how that works with some of the reconstruction, the old core neighborhoods. If we get funded for the 16th Street going west, how does that all, all work on those things? So that's kind of what I'm, to your point, Chris, I think that's probably the good thing to do is kind of get everything back on the, on the table and look at things and maybe do more of a capital improvement plan to start long-term budget planning to, to meet the needs that we need for infrastructure.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So I just want to ask Nancy, do we got some, some money coming that we're going to be paid off here shortly in some years? There's some.
A lot of that is already, you know, worked into the other projects coming up. Because we'll need to borrow 57 and some things like that.
I just was kind of remembering, there was some that was coming off, but we've ready.
Well, some of it we might have had, but we're reserving some of that for the payoff of Third, Fourth and Fifth.
Okay.
Just the underfunds add a little. Right now, everything's kind of.
I was just trying to remember.
No question. Wish we had it.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Meg. Any else, some of the overall budget? And one other thing that I've, I've got that we, we received last year when they asked, that involves infrastructure, was the fire department. And they have that list of all those fixes that need to be done. And a lot of those, for whatever reason, they worked on, planned for, whatever it was. I think that's another piece of our infrastructure that we need to look at. Not to build a new fire hall. I'm not, that's not, to me, that's not on the table. We don't have it in our capital budget. We've got water towers, wastewater treatment plant stuff, but to fix, skim the building, the roof, the outside, there's some things there.
To make it.
We've got some ideas on how much that would be. You know, we could, you know, one of the two different ways to look at it, we could say, hey, that whole list of things, the things that would need to be done to make it not leak on our infrastructure, our vehicles that are in the building, protection, we could say, okay, come up with, it's going to cost 400, 500,000 dollars to do that. We can borrow short term to do that, add to the budget over the next 10 years. Or we can try to piecemeal it out to where we use the stabilization fund. And Nancy kind of gave me that. We'd have hundreds and some thousand dollars in there where we could piece it out over two or three years with a plan of, here's, you know, phase one, phase two, phase three. So that way it doesn't hit the levy and it doesn't, we're still upgrading and fixing the infrastructure, what piece party is.
Sure. So that's, that's a possibility to be able to use those funds. But just a reminder, we never know what might be added to it, but we have that available now.
And I've asked for a plan from the department as far as, we're, we're not going to build a new fire station. It's not my opinion. I'm one vote, but I would adamantly vote no to a new fire station. It just doesn't fit with our capital plan, it doesn't fit with our budget, but we can take care of the building that we have to last us for another 25 years or more by investing something into it. Again, I don't think people mind fixing the infrastructure so that we don't have a conversation five years down the road. Well, we didn't fix it, but now it's going to cost us $10 million to build a new one. Sorry. Nobody wants to spend the, the hundreds to fix it, but they really don't want to hear five years from now, we have to spend $10 million because we have to. So that's something that we'll have by the 11th as well, as far as working them there too. And hopefully we can do it in a way that doesn't affect this number that's on here. So. Anything else? So do we need to plug with a number tonight for the 11th?
No, it's good discussion to have those that you're better prepared to decide what y'all want to do on the 11th.
So we don't have to decide if they.
Not at all. No, I just.
Okay. So is everybody good with kind of the discussion we had now? We've kind of heard everybody's, maybe we'll have more after the personnel.
Can I suggest that we maybe, like we've done previously, set an hour of working session ahead of the council meeting to, you know, get some final things done before we set levy?
That's a good idea.
Yes.
Just make sure in town.
By the clock, that's.
Yeah, I bet that works. I'll even break people if that works.
Is there any way we can find out from Homestead County what they provide for the city of Byron?
Why can't we get a hold of Byron?
They'll tell us.
Mary will give us the contract.
Yeah. I'll get a hold of Mary.
I mean, that might help us.
I'm just trying to get my mind around.
No, 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 I understand. I'm just trying to help us all understand better. I mean, maybe you have a very extreme point, but if we have something to back it up and help the rest of us understand, it would be a plus.
And part of our too is, you know, we have our own police station, you know, they don't, so maybe you got that.
Well, yeah, there's lots of both things.
And it's hard to offset the cost.
Million dollars.
No, I agree. I agree.
We've had our police station for years and it costs the same thing to buy it.
No, I agree, but I just mean there's.
I understand what you're saying though. We have other overhead costs that are there.
There's overhead costs that we have that they don't have. And we can't split it up because our county's smaller than theirs, you know.
Sure. But at least we can take certain parts of it to compare.
And I'd like to know what their call logs are.
That's an idea.
Because, I mean, we have, just looking at what was provided in the packet, a ridiculously large number of calls.
Yes.
I don't read in the paper that often about people's cars being broken into in Catherine, but you sure see it all the time in Byron, in the newspapers.
Yes. I get there's a whole trade-off.
Yeah.
I mean, we, maybe they're getting $400,000 for the service and we're getting 1.4. That's a difference.
The more information we get, the easier it is to compare.
The, the other thing we need to look at too is, the oldest, older our baby boomers get, the more calls we are creating for the police department too, with medical issues and on and on.
The other thing to keep in mind too is that we still are covered by Dodge County. Dodge County still responds to calls in Cassin. They still patrol the Cassin area. So we have that in addition to our police force that are patrolling town. Because we are part of the county and we all pay county taxes as well. So that's, when we look at numbers of, you know, so many officers per thousand people, well, you have to factor in some county in there too, which we don't get that number.
It works the other way. Other way too, through Cassin heads out on the highway to help, to control when they're not here doing, working for us.
I just want to understand that better. Yeah, that'd be good information, Nancy, if you can get that part.
I'll, I'll get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, could I suggest maybe checking on Stuart Bill too, because they also contract for it. So we got to compare some.
And we're not, in my opinion anyway, I'm not interested in contracting it out. Because Dodge County's uninterested, has adamant, they're not willing to have the conversation.
And if they did, it'd be five to seven years old, correct?
Yeah, we, yeah. So thank you. Everybody's good with that. And then we'll meet at 5 o'clock before the next meeting to have more discussions and more details and both of them are up for meeting. All right. Do we need a motion on that early start?
We don't need it.
For work session?
No.
Yeah, it's not. Okay. Okay. No, I don't have any cards. Let's.
Yeah.
I'm hearing, committee reports, planning commissions, health work conditioning, whose permit for planned unit development? A resolution approving CUP for AQ. All right, that's in your packet. It's been so long since we did this.
Yeah.
Same one, it's been a packet twice, we just didn't have the documents. So are there any questions on this or anything planning is owing? Because we've already kind of talked about it the one time. Yep.
Yep.
Nothing's changed. It's just the actual official document. And we're comfortable that this whole thing out there isn't adding to non-compliance. I mean, it's all going to be in compliance with water and.
They're all doing it to city standards for the infrastructure out there. Engineer will be involved.
Okay.
Yep. That's correct connection you're developing here, I believe.
Yeah.
All right, entertaining motion to approve the resolution for the conditioning's permit for a planned unit development for South Fork Third. I'll make that motion. Thanks, Wayne. Second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Post. Passes unanimously. Second one is South Fork Development Agreement, also in the packet there. Same document we've had before, just finished. Any questions on that? Entertainer motion to approve the South Fork Third subdivision development agreement.
I'll make a motion.
Sign, you have a second?
I'll second that.
Dan, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. And thank you to the developer for continuing to develop the city of Cassin and create housing for folks to live here. And this is the final plat for the South Fork Third. Any questions on that resolution? Okay. Entertainer motion to approve the resolution approving the final plat of the South Fork Third subdivision.
So moved.
Thanks, Wayne. Second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously. On to Park Board A. Minutes are in there. Any questions on the minutes?
Can I make one observation?
Yeah.
And maybe a request? Uh, and maybe a request. Uh, I know probably next month or the end of next month, you'll be making appointments for ports and planning. If we could get a list of attendees to the various commissions and see if we've got dedicated people to the various commissions or not. Uh, I see a reoccurring theme, particularly with the park board with missing members. That if they're not going to commit to it, uh, we may want to thank them very much and look for somebody that, you know, who will put in the time and.
Adaptability sometimes, you know, work schedules and I guess. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Is there a way to, I just have to look back to the minutes of the last year to see what the.
In every, yeah, you know, all year. I think all boards should be looked at.
Yep. Okay. Okay. So we got the minutes in the park board. So the elephant in the room that was, uh, buried on the second page. Um, you know, maybe the third page. You know, maybe the.
It's the November one.
Oh, I know the one. So there's a recommendation, I guess, from the park board. Is that correct? They took a.
So at the park board, uh, Ronnie Hager brought forth a quote, which I was hoping we would have had everybody can feed one here tonight. It's fourteen pages long.
I'll put it in here.
It's in there.
Yeah, we all got it. Yeah.
The paper was. And it was, uh, the wall at Veterans Park is falling apart and it's unsafe in some eyes. So they're trying to figure out if we wanted to fix it or what. And they brought it forth to the park board and they were looking at it. It was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to fix it. And they couldn't see spending taxpayer money on that wall for that reason. Cause it was a lot of money to fix it. So they recommended to the council that it could be knocked down, but it's ultimately a council decision. And that was just there.
I, I read through that. I read the minutes. So I talked to some folks and I read the bid to fix it. And I mean, the companies are seeing what type of plan, but they do a great job. My only hesitation is, I get this recommendation from the park board. We would want, have to take that action. Is that I agree with the park board that it comes down to spending park budget or city budget dollars to spend a quarter million dollars to fix it. I don't think that's in our budget and our taxpayers' best interest from a budget standpoint with all the other infrastructure we have to fix. So I understand that. As far as just saying boom, boom, it's gone. I would entertain that we talk about that if there's private individual or individuals who would like to donate toward that, to put a date out there and say, hey, if you can raise the money by this date, by the time the pool opens, whatever sort of date we have, and you want to fix it, it is a piece of our town's history. It was, was part of the WPA program back in the early thirties.
Nineteen thirty-eight.
So I, I get the significance that could be there for some people. So I almost wrote the council before we say, yep, let's just do it.
Well, the only reason the park board did it is because they knew the council needed an idea of what was up with, so.
Absolutely. Cause it is falling apart. I mean, see it over here. It's, it's falling apart.
And what they're worried about too now, the city, uh, public works is, is now that, do we have to barricade? Do we have to fence it off if it's, so nobody crawls on it, so it don't tip over? They don't know how bad it was. And they want to make sure that, that it doesn't become a liability.
Sure.
So that was the, that was, the whole discussion was.
Cause it needs to be barricaded. It needs to be barricaded.
Right.
For marks off. Yep. And that only adds the urgency that if there is a individual or individuals who would want to save it, it needs to be done soon. So it doesn't linger for, say, twelve or thirteen years.
Mm-hmm.
And be a problem for us.
And then the park board didn't know how else to do it. That's why they just made a recommendation. They didn't.
No, it's perfect. I think they did it exactly. They did it due diligence. They got the information.
And we knew there was options out there, but they wanted it here.
Can I ask a question? If they fix this, how much of it will be original?
They're replacing over seven hundred.
Stones?
Square feet of stone or linear feet of stone out of it. I mean.
So they're actually building a new wall?
Almost. Yes. Was it, uh, seven hundred square feet of stone would be replaced, two hundred six square feet of caps on the wall. I mean.
I, I was just asking because I have replaced a lot of the stone wall down in Whitewater. And to keep it in the historic mindset, we had to keep at least seventy-five percent of that wall to keep it historic. Otherwise, if it was less than seventy-five percent, the state said it's gone.
Well, and the other thing too, the building restoration, they didn't write it either, but they said they would have to test more of the stone as they're fixing it.
Cause I'm sure none of that was kilmed. That's why it's deteriorated.
And they're afraid that, like, part of it at the tower, there was that old fireplace. And when they tested that, that was all deteriorated so bad there was no, they had replaced it all.
Right.
Afraid on this, that it might be the same problem.
Cause that was the same thing in Whitewater. The stone that was kilmed was staying preserved. It's the soft stone that wasn't kilmed. That's the stuff that's disappearing. And like I said, if their, their determination was if seventy-five, more than seventy-five percent of it had to be replaced, it was gone. Because it wasn't, you couldn't restore it.
It could still be open to permitting. If a group wants to come in.
With a certain timeline.
Work with building restoration and get it done by the time it's time to open the pool, then I think the opportunity should be provided.
Yeah.
But I agree that we have other things that are more pressing to spend two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer money on.
Yes.
I totally agree.
I'm good with it. Somebody can come up with the money.
Yeah, I, I'm all fine with that. Yeah. And I think the park board would be fine with it. And the rest, you know, it, that's why they went to the work.
But we've got to set a date. I mean, we've got to.
Yeah, I was going to say the clock is counting, right? Cause we're.
Do we have any idea how long it would take building, building restoration to do it?
They said, in here it says forty-five days once they start doing it. And we, you know, Ronnie would know that.
Two months.
Two months.
And when can they start?
When can they start?
Not till May or June or.
No, I think they can do it winter, but.
They'd have to heat it.
Maybe some of the water tower work.
They just have to heat it.
Much than ideal.
So if we put a, a day like April first, then they can, if somebody did come up with it, they could have it done by the time the pool opens. Tomorrow day and June and after school's done. And if they don't come up with it April first, it gives them sixty days to get rid of it before the pool opens. So it's not a hazard for, cause there's not, there's not a lot of people climbing on it in the wintertime.
Right.
To keep people away from it. It's more when the park opens, the pool opens, you know, so.
If your kid's waiting to be picked up, that tends to climb on it fast.
Or adults.
Adults.
Don't want to watch the belly flop.
Yeah, I get advantage for. So April first?
Yeah.
Yep.
We would probably need to have a motion on that, right? To, to figure back to the park board and say, hey, if you come up with a solution by April first, otherwise it's demolition.
I'll make that motion then.
Okay.
We put it out there.
For a second.
Right. Thanks, Mel. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. And Tom, thanks for giving all the information so we could make the decision on two.
Yeah, that really helps.
Yep. Okay. On to, uh, GO Business Insurance bids. So in your packet is the, back on that. Um. So here's where, I, I had this, we, we tabled it last time for a couple of different reasons. One was I wanted to verify that the workers' comp portion was being, that was offered to be waived by bidder number three. Was being credited to our account or refunded back to the city. It is. So those are the, the bids you see there based on the package. And my, so there's a lot of information on this that I've been involved with. I've had, um, a tough time with this one. Cause we put out the bids. So how the insurance works just in general, we've got two separate type of things. There's the package, which is their liability and the liquor liability and that type of thing. And there's the workers' comp. It's a separate policy. League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust pays a commission on both those sets of packages. They pay a two percent commission on the workers' comp and they pay up to a ten, a ten percent commission, which is standard on the package. So we put this, how they were to bid the package. There was nothing about worker, workers' comp. I had one of the agents call me and I sent up to Nancy and, you know, they, they clarified that they were bidding the package. You're not bidding the workers' comp. Okay. So we said, I've got a copy of the package. It got sent to our agency. We had no interest in doing it. Um, so these are the bids that you see there that came back from the package. And then one person put, hey, and if we, you know, get the package, we'll waive our two percent on the workers' comp. And so that was the bid thing we saw last time, which adjusted them. The other two have that two, two percent added to it. So I just felt funny about that we, that we, it wasn't what was put out there. I get it. It's better for the taxpayers. So in my mind, as I wrestle with that for two weeks, and Nancy knows I bothered her about this several times, getting different pieces of information. Thank you, by the way. Appreciate it. Um, that we put out a bid, got back the stuff, and then somebody said, oh, by the way, I'll do this extra thing. Does that really, is that the fair way to do the bid? But now that we know that they'll do that extra thing, is it fair to the taxpayers if we say no? So we got choice A, which we know will save the, is the saving the taxpayers the most money. So we got choice B, which I think is the more fair and clear and transparent way to do a bid is if you bid for something, you bid on exactly what's being asked for and nothing else is considered. So I'm going to make this recommendation to the council. That we take the bid that we know saves the taxpayers the most money. Because that, we know that. We got, like, to deserve the best interest of the taxpayers. So for year one only. And then we rebid this next fall, but in a more clear way of exactly what we're asking for the bid, how we want the bids back. You know, do we want it? Cause and, and that's like, you know, so some cities' agents will bid, cause ten percent on the package, say, is the standard commission that the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust will pay. They bid it like bidder number one said, hey, we'll do it for four percent. So basically they're going to take a six percent discount. You know, six percent of it's going to be refunded to the city or not charged on our, our policy, our premium. Bidder number two put in a dollar amount. So we have to convert, you know, so we need the, we need a clear way to get the bids. That when, so that there's no question of, one, what you're bidding on, what we're going to evaluate the bid on. And then it can go out to everybody and then we can get a better deal for our taxpayers. So my recommendation would be to take bidder number three and they're going to waive their workers' comp, comp for this year. So that that would be the low bid with our total insurance package between workers' comp and the package. But then next year to work on something that when we put this out to bid, it's very clear what we're asking for and exactly what you're bidding. So we can be fair to the bidders also.
Did these three bidders assume that they were getting it for three years?
It said one, two, or three years.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Well, we, we have that, um, you know, that's the possibility with any of the three that they may say, we don't want to do it one year. But we'll go right back to whatever's recommended tonight and work on it.
Yeah. Cause it says proposals can be for one, two, or three years. So they all bid for three years. We can choose to take the one that saves us the most the first year, we bid it the second year.
Okay.
But they, we can be more clear on that next year to be. I, I just think we need to be fair to our taxpayers, which with the information we know, that's the most fair to our taxpayers. But I don't know if it's the most fair to the bidders. I think there was some confusion there. I really, I really do think there was confusion there because when you're told we're not bidding the workers' comp, do we, should we even consider the workers' comp? It'd be like, to me, it'd be if there were ten blocks of chip ceiling put out for bid. And I knew you had three more blocks you were going to do in a different project and I bid the ten blocks and say, oh, by the way, I'll do those other three for free. Do we take that into consideration? The other ten people that bid it didn't say that. I mean, I don't know if that's, just doesn't seem transparent to me. So I'm going to recommend that we take bidder number three for one year, assuming they'll take it for one year.
Okay. Before we go.
Yep.
Did any of the bidders call and ask any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, one, I don't know if bidder number one called.
I'm, no.
No.
I was just curious.
One and three didn't call.
Yeah. Bidder number two called a lot. But they called, they called me for, to start asking for clarification on what are you bidding? That's when I sent up to Nancy. So I know they had communications with Nancy.
Yes.
Emails and stuff. So, yeah, they were asking ahead of time and then, so that's my recommendation. And I would make that a motion. We accept bidder number three for one year. For a second.
I'll second that.
Sign. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Thank you. Uh, twenty twenty fee ordinance.
Um, we have included your packet a list of fees in preparation for going into effect January first. As our, as indicated, um, we had already adopted ice cream fees, which had to go into effect at the beginning of season, along with the new liquor rate. Um, but included in this one are just two picnic shelter rental changes, some new cemetery rates. Primarily because our, um, the person who takes care of our cemetery, um, raised their rates. So we've decided we're suggesting raising ours. Um, the par four changed some daily rates. And then, um, as per the budget, we had utility rate changes that were recommended as part of water, sewer, electric and storm. So those are all now included here.
For the future, can we have a before and after so we can see right away the changes? So.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
And lift it right out so we can see it right away. So, I mean, we go through it, but then you got to try to find the old one.
Oh, we can, we can redline them.
If you redline them, then we know right away which ones changed.
Sure.
Do you want to have that for the next meeting? Cause we don't have to.
We can title it, sure.
We can do this with our budget.
Well, then we know right away what it was and what it went to. So there's.
Yeah, we can red like copy for the next, that, that way.
Sure. You bet.
That'd be awesome. Thank you. Cause then we can present that also that, you know.
Cause then it's clear.
We have a levy that's going to increase, but we also have fees that are going to increase. So everybody can see here's what the positive business is. Thank you. Snow hauling proposal. All one of them.
We have one proposal and, uh, the fee is one hundred and fifteen dollars. It increased from a hundred and ten last year. That's your red line.
Per hour.
Hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen.
Per hour.
But we had, yeah, well, per, yes, that is.
Cause then we'll take charges per hour.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Just make a chair.
Okay. For sure. These guys have always done their. Oh, yeah. So I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Engineers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, three items tonight. Um, first one is approves location of quotes for the demolition of two residential properties in the city. Uh, the first one is eighty-five East Spectrum World Highway. Uh, that's just north of East Spectrum World Highway, just, excuse me, just north of the highway. East of Maston Creek there from the north of Grant property. Um, the city secured or was given that property to, I think, a tax forfeiture. Um, so part of that project that we're proposing is basically moving this, the home, the garage and some sheds, um, along with some trees and vegetation in that area. We restore the area to a turf condition as part of the project and disconnect water and sewer services. Um, second property, very similar. Uh, that's one oh two fifteen street northeast. That's the home at the intersection of Sixteenth Street and Highway fifty-seven, the southeast quadrant intersection. Uh, city purchased that property to accommodate potentially a future road project there. Uh, that project, or that home, excuse me, did have some damage in the last flood that we had. Um, so that likely will be fundable through the flood mitigation, is our understanding, what we've heard from the state at this point. I think it was an eighty percent reimbursable, if I'm not mistaken. So myself and Nancy are still working on that reimbursement. So, uh, what we're asking tonight is to approve the plans and specifications that are in your council packet. Um, and then what would we do from there is solicit quotes from contractors to complete the work. We would bring those quotes back to you at a future council meeting. Um, and then at that point, you either accept or reject those quotes. We're not locking ourselves in anything tonight. Uh, and then we'd likely demo this, demo the structures this winter and then come back in the spring and do some of the turf restoration. And then we'd likely demolish, demo the structures this winter, and then come back in the spring and do some of the turf restoration. Is what I would post to schedule. Now's a good time to do it. Contrary to this, things freeze up, they can't put pipe in the ground, so they like to do these building demos. Budget number twenty, twenty-five thousand, probably per property is a good number. There's some regulated ways that they have to account for that may bump that up a little bit, I think, again, it's probably give time to complete this work if we're going to do it, so.
So where do we pay for it from?
Well, right now we're paying out of the same fund that's paid for all the other flood costs.
Okay.
And then, so we're tracking that, so we can submit it.
Okay, so just that.
Will for sure be reimbursed.
Okay.
Up to, I think it's seventy-five percent.
Okay.
Haven't heard much from Steve lately, still.
Okay. Any questions for Brandon on that? I entertain a motion to approve the solicitation of quotes for the demolition of the two properties.
Motion.
Thanks Mel, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
The second item tonight is a professional service agreement to do our engineering for the Savior House of School twenty twenty-two project. You may be asking, why are we already looking at that project and not constructing until twenty twenty-two? This project is a funding that we got from MINDOT, so ultimately we need to start getting our documentation into MINDOT to keep this schedule, to keep this project rolling. To back up a little bit, how do we get to this, this point and what, what is this project? The city and the school had a cooperative kind of agreement to do a Savior House of School planning grant. So we met with the school and some planners and ultimately looked at the school facilities, generally the school facilities, to look at, how do we get our students to school more safely? We came up with a plan with all these great projects, and then we in turn used that plan to do the TAP application, which is the project that we, we received funding for, to actually physically do the work. So, in that agreement, I think it's page six, there has a nice little map there that looks, or that shows the work that is a part of that TAP application. So we've already secured funding to construct this project that we're looking at tonight. That was like a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project, and I think the funding was about two hundred and fifty thousand that was coming into the city from the MINDOT TAP application program. So we do have an existing agreement with MINDOT and the school to fund the remainder of it. The proposed engineering amount tonight is consistent with that application, and that was part of the cost that the city and the school is picking up. So, again, construct a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project is what we're looking at. Happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Questions for Brandon? So we've already, we've already got this budgeted, correct? We've already got, this is already budgeted and part of our, our contribution.
Yeah, it's just a matter of timing.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Can Stan do a second? No, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. On to the water main project, what's being about.
Yeah, so Nancy had asked me to put together, I guess maybe I got the staff and kind of talked about some watering projects that kind of weren't necessarily on Nancy's radar from a financing standpoint. She said, well, it's budgeting season, tis the season, let's, let's maybe get these things out here and, and bring them into the fold when we talk to, talk about budgeting. So, I quickly put together some quick cost estimates. We haven't done any detailed scoping and estimating for these projects for, again, three watering projects. I'll just kind of go through them and then I'll just leave it as an open discussion on what we, what the council like us to do, direct us to do more work on this, or put it in a budget, or maybe lump it into a bonding project in the future. So, project number one is Sixteenth, Sixth Street southwest, west of Third Avenue. So that's just north of Highway fourteen where the two apartment complexes are, and then Sixth Street there, which is west of Third Avenue, kind of goes into the south side of Lyons Park, just south of Maston Creek there. What we're experiencing in that area has been a significant amount of water main breaks in that area. We have patches upon patches and sleeves upon repair sleeves upon repair sleeves. That is a dead end water main, that isn't loops. We've had a fair amount of customers out of water service there. And really those, those water main breaks are costing the city, kind of nickel and diming the city as we go here. So I talked to water, the, to the work staff, we said, well, let's put together some numbers to replace just the water main. The problem from a engineering and construction standpoint is, just replacing a water main can be somewhat difficult, you know, tearing up the pavement. And we kind of went out there and looked, and we had some curb settlements, and then we ended up basically throwing a cost number in here tonight to replace all of the pavement as part of that water main project and repair some of the curb and gutter. The sewer we thought was in pretty good shape, so it's a little bit of a hybrid of not just water main cost, there's some road cost in there, but it is not a full reconstruct, is what we're looking at. And we always need to ask ourselves, what do we do? Do we do a full reconstruction? Is that necessarily warranted? At the end of the day, we don't think it necessarily is, but this is somewhat of a project that can really go either way. It's really been, been driven by the water main, but it could be a full reconstruction. So that's three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand for that project. And again, the city, every time a water main breaks, I mean, we're pushing ten thousand dollars every water main break that we have. And at some point that, that water main's not going to heal itself, it's not going to get better, it's just going to continue to, to nickel and dime the water department. The second one is a fairground to the water tower. Previously, at the council, we talked about this, a future water tower that we need to ultimately replace the water tower that's at the fairgrounds. We've had some preliminary discussion with the county to relocate that water tower onto the fairgrounds property. The fair board would allow, the county would allow an easement to have that water tower there. This water main extension of a hundred and ninety to two hundred and twenty thousand would be the water main extension into the fairgrounds to not only serve our future water tower, but serve the fairgrounds that is planning a future addition in the future, and then ultimately eliminate some of their substandard water main that's not metered that we've been pushed from the DNR to ultimately meter. So I think it's kind of meeting a lot of needs that not only the city has, but also the, the fairgrounds too. So I think it's a great project, and this project may be scheduled or may direct the schedule from when the county's looking at their improvements. So that's something that we may be looking at having to do next year, so I wanted to get that out there. At the end of the day, I think it's a win for the city, because we're securing a, a site, and we're also meeting a need from the fairgrounds and eliminating some unmetered water that we have that the DNR has been after us to kind of chase down and provide meters to, so it's kind of in the bunch at their, at a hundred and ninety to two hundred and twenty thousand. The third one is a water main loop through Don Marty's property. This loop would be from the end of Commerce Drive here. We have a, kind of a dead end water main that is planned to run across Marty's property in the future when that property is developed into the Linden Manor area. The reason why we feel this looks pretty critical is the Linden Manor area is all served by a dead end water main, there's only water, one water main serving that area. And we did the storm sewer project on East Main there, we actually shut that water main down. Actually came apart in Berolfia for a time, and then we had to take, take it down to, not only repair it, but then to construct it in the future. Slid area was shut down for a significant portion of time. If we had this water main loop constructed at the time, we would not have that water main outage. Now with that said, if that property was to develop, that water main would be constructed, and then there'd be no cost to the city because that water main would be constructed with that construction from Commerce Drive into the, kind of the Marty area there, that industrial park there. So that's kind of one of the things where, this is a timing thing. This is probably last on the city's priority list, but I just want to make the council aware of it, that we have a really significant portion of our city that is on a dead end water main. And if we have a significant failure of that water main, and that water main does go underneath the railroad tracks, we didn't know where it was, we don't know how old it is. We could be kind of scrambling to get water to that portion of the neighborhood. And a perfect rule again would be that the last, next phase of industrial park or extension of Commerce Drive is built, and we create that loop and then we're in good shape. I'm just not sure what the timing would be. So again, if the city thought of this as important enough, then we would approach the property owner and have the conversation, maybe put in the water main in first before the subdivision. And maybe there'd be a future cost that the city could recover at that point, because we would be installing a water main that that development would need, so. I just want to get those out there and get some direction from the council and see where this is going. Again, when I talked to Nancy, she said, well, let's get these out here, see where they're at. We look at doing a bonding for some other project, maybe we lump those, these projects into that bond. They are all water main projects, so we could be coming out of the, the water fund, of course. So I wanted to get them out there, so.
Yeah, and that, you know, because it had been mentioned, you know, these projects are significant enough that we don't have the money sitting around for them. When we looked at doing the INI, we also looked at water, and using that fifty percent rule of what we keep and reserves. We have about three hundred thousand, but that doesn't cover all of this, so, again, Brandon's point is to just be aware of it, and if we need this, what do we do? If we want to do all three, could we bond it? We've got Minnesota Rural Water Association, we certainly could. We've also got the water tower possibly coming up. So those considerations are out there, it's just that we don't have this money sitting here to do it without considering bonding, so.
Sixth Street. During the flood, was there any issues with anybody that lived on that street?
Don't know. Be something if, if we were going to do something there, we'd want to look at. We did televise the San Tracer, we have road over in town televising Main, and Main, excuse me, not Main Street, hundred fifty-seven and First Street northeast. They ultimately jumped over there, did, did that televising, nothing jumped out, but we haven't talked to any property owners and see where that, because the sewer does come from the south side of town underneath the highway to that area too. So that would be something we'd follow up. We, if we did that work and wanted to look at the sewer, to make sure, we don't want to replace the sewer along with the water main.
Is there scum sewer on that street?
Uh, yes, there is. There's a little bit of old, old spots running drains some north of the creek, so.
Is there subdrain on that street?
And I doubt it.
I doubt it too.
I know you're going with us, and let's just rebuild it, and now we're at three hundred to three fifty projects, I don't, five to six hundred thousand, you just don't know the number there.
But I mean, if we're going to tear up the street and replace curb and gutter, and everybody's issue when ever flooding comes about is subdrain. Do these people have a place to dump this water?
And one of the apartments has a corrugated flexible discharge from one of their sun pumps that's running out on the street, so. Something we, we want to consider, really think hard about. Again, how do we make the taxpayers' money go as far as we can but do the right thing long term?
I'm just asking.
No, it was, it started out, well, this is like this water main, let's just replace this water main here. Well, then it's like, wow, that curb and gutter is in so-so shape, the road's in so-so shape. We're going to tear, the road's going to look like crap, and we get the water main in there, let's do it all, and then here we are, we're rebuilding the whole street, so.
Right.
Things, things we'd want to consider if we move forward, if this is something that the council felt was an important project, so.
Yep. Okay, so do we have any money to go on the water fund for any of this?
About three hundred.
So we could do the first one, whichever one has the priority, we could do that. We don't even said that tonight, that's just something on our radar, if you want. All right, any questions for Brandon or Nancy?
One last question. If you had a choice of these three, which would be your top pick?
When we go back to the county and ask them for the easements for Sixteenth Street West, the trails as part of the Savior House of School plan in the water main, we're going to bring all three of them forward to them. I want to know what their schedule is for this water main extension, so they can kind of meet their needs. I think they're going to dictate some of that schedule. I mean, maybe Nancy's point, that's, let's just call it two hundred thousand, we probably could cover that, we don't need to bond for that. So I think that might drive that project regardless. And again, I think long term, that's, if we've got to meet a certain schedule for that portion of the project, let's meet it so we can secure that property for the water tower. And then Nancy and I are working on some other funding for the water tower itself, so. And then Sixth Street southwest, it's not going to go away, it's going to have to be done in some.
Sixth Street is costing us money every year.
It is, yeah, it really is, so.
But C could also cost us a bunch if that is not done.
Yep. If we have a water main break underneath the railroad tracks, we'd be scrambling to figure out how do we construct the water main to serve a significant portion of our town, at the end of the day. Which is not ideal, obviously. We want to always keep many loops and have multiple feeds in areas, so.
Did you ever find out how old that water main is?
I didn't know. Fifty-seven we found out, but we're working on that, not that loop.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
The Kudos keeps on coming.
Yeah.
On the personnel, K one. That is a letter of resignation from the fire department from Steve Jones. It's in your packet, so he'll be retiring at the end of the year. He's thanking all the prior chiefs, the current chief for along him, and helping him with his career. I'd like to thank Steve for his service to the council fire department and the community. I entertain a motion to accept his resignation. Thanks Mel, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Do I need a third? The next one is a letter of resignation from the fire department from Chris Myers. So he's had a difficult time with this, and I know the chief's met with him a couple of times, the chief talked to me, I know he's visited with, well, he was just different places on, on this one here. His letter, you know, he had an injury to his hand outside of the department and a loss of motion and ability to not be able to do what that needs to do. So, with that, he's retiring after ten years of service, so I entertain a motion to accept.
I'm still, still moved.
Thanks Dwayne, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. I'd like to thank Chris for his service to the fire department and the community for the ten years he's done that. I know he's been there and been dedicated to that. Next is the letter referenced by Mel from Zach Klein, part-time police officer. He's resigning to take the full-time position in Olatana. He had a nice letter there explaining why and this is time here. Zach's a great member of the community, and I wish him the best in Olatana, so I'll accept the, or I'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept his letter of resignation. Do I have a second?
Second then.
Thanks Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks to all three for their service. On to the attorneys' report. We're going to have two closed sessions to discuss negotiations. Those will not be recorded, is that correct? They will be recorded. We will open the meeting up after we're done, so we'll clear the room and open it up when we're done.
I want to give it a second so there's a, a break.